With us this evening, as we typically do, we'll go ahead and start our meeting off with an invocation led by Vice Chairman Simpson.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Join me if you will. Gracious Lord, as we come together again to do the people's business, we humble ourselves before you, seeking your presence and your blessing on this meeting. As we strive to seek the greater good, help us to recognize our shortcomings and our inadequacies in order that we may be selfless in our direction. Grant us wisdom concerning our knowledge of the issues at hand and discerning hearts regarding our decision-making. Lord, we pray for our leaders at the state and national level, particularly those heads of state and in high positions. As they face the many difficult decisions that lie before us as a country, I ask that you grant them the wisdom, the strength, and the faith to meet the challenges before them. As always, we are mindful of those who serve and protect. Be with them, guide and sustain them as they provide for our safety and security. As we count our blessings, Father, we know there are many who due to physical or emotional illness, want or loneliness, are in need of our prayers. We ask that you comfort them with your love and grace. It's in Christ's name I ask these things. Amen.
And if you will, rise with us for the Pledge of Allegiance. We're honored tonight to have Wolf Den Number 10 from PAC 151, an Indian Trail, and I'm going to ask them to come right through that door over here, and you can come right up here and lead the Pledge of Allegiance for us tonight. Boy, you guys look sharp tonight. Goodness gracious. Thank you all very much. We appreciate you doing that for us. All right. That will take us to item number one under General Business, our employee recognition for the month of September 2014. We'd like to take a moment and just recognize those employees who are celebrating milestone anniversaries with Union County. In five years of service, Nina Meadows, Daphus Miller, Dorothy Thomas, Erica Claiborne, and Catherine Coffey. With 10 years of service, Jason McBride, Victor Adcock, Nona Books, and Mary Udi. With 15 years of service, Christie Ford, Beverly Osborne, Kelly Morton, and Vicki Cameron. Celebrating 20 years of service, Trina Horn, Meredith Elliott, Kathy Newland, Mark Watson, Larry Davis, and Steve Crump. We certainly appreciate all of your continued service and look forward to many more years of faithful service to Union County and our citizens. So, thank you very much. All right, we will now have a proclamation regarding Make It in Union County Manufacturing Week. If I can find it here. This will be presented at a later date, but as we will not have a meeting closer to the time, we would like to go ahead and read this, and I'll turn it over to you, Mrs. Cale, if you have any comments you'd like to make.
Thank you, Chick, Mr. Chairman. I appreciate it, Commissioners. Very briefly, I'd like to update you on the activity of your Union County Chamber of Commerce. Recently, the Monroe Union County Economic Development had entered into an initiative with several of our manufacturers called Make It in Union County. After I came to our chamber about a year ago, we moved that to our chamber. National Manufacturing Day is October the 3rd, which is this Friday, the first Friday in October. However, here in Union County, we have such a great story to tell that we're going to make it a whole week. So, we're going to begin celebrating September the 29th through October the 3rd, and I'd like to share with you just a couple of quick facts and then a little bit of the activities. The first thing I'd like for everyone to know is that for every dollar that is produced by a manufacturer, almost $1.50 is created throughout the rest of the economy. Each manufacturing job creates almost three jobs in other sectors of the economy, and the average annual salary of manufacturing workers is over $70,000. Here in Union County, we've got a great story to tell. Over 14,000 manufacturing jobs are created with over half a billion dollars in annual payroll. What we plan to do that week is we've partnered with the Union County Public Schools, South Piedmont Community College, and Monroe Union County Economic Development to create a task force. And what we have created is three manufacturers, representatives from those groups, as well as some marketing folks have come together. We are going, the focus of this is twofold. One is to tell the community about the good benefits of having manufacturing here in Union County, the jobs created, the positive effect on our tax base, as well as the contributions that those manufacturers make to our nonprofits in terms of hours donated as well as dollars. Starting off that week, we'll have Monday, which will be a media day, sharing on social media. On Tuesday, we will have open houses at Gulston and Greiner Bio One, both Monroe companies. On Wednesday, we will have open houses at Turbo Mecca and QEMS. And then on Thursday, we'll have a showcase at South Piedmont Community College, where we'll have about 35 to 40 manufacturers, as well as veterans representatives, as well as representatives from South Piedmont, so that if someone comes in and talks to a manufacturer and wants a job, it doesn't have the skills, they can go right across the way and talk with someone at South Piedmont about obtaining those skills, or talk to a veteran's representative if they're a vet. In addition, on Friday, October the 3rd, we'll have an invitation-only breakfast honoring those manufacturers, and it's at that point that we hope that we'll have a proclamation from Union County to present to them, to show the support of this community for the work that they do. We're very excited about this initiative. To my knowledge, it's the first time this has happened in the history of Union County, and we're very excited to be a part of it and very excited to have our partners take a part in this. Part of the issue and the reason that we're doing this is to have awareness with our young people, their parents and teachers, about the availability of good-paying jobs right here in Union County with or without a college education. So, for those young people who aren't going on to college, that they have an opportunity to stay here in our community and earn a good pay. I'd be happy to answer any questions or provide any more details. Makeitinyounioncounty.com is our website, and we're also available on social media.
Thank you. Ms. Cale, any comments or questions? All right.
Thank you all for this opportunity.
Thank you. I'll entertain a motion that we adopt a proclamation proclaiming September 29th through October the 3rd as Make It in Union County Manufacturing Week. All in favor? Aye. Opposed? None. With that, I'll read the proclamation. Whereas manufacturing provides a significant contribution to the national, state, and local economy, and whereas Union County has had a strong emphasis on the recruitment and retention of manufacturing companies since it began its economic development program, and whereas Union County has over 150 manufacturers producing some of the most technical and precision products in the world, and whereas Union County has the highest geographic concentration of aerospace manufacturing in the Carolinas, and whereas Union County manufacturers provide over 15,000 employment and career opportunities for skilled workers, whereas Union County has attracted over $1.5 billion of capital investment from manufacturers and the creation of over 6,000 new jobs to the area, and whereas Union County is fortunate to be the home of many great manufacturers, some of them world leaders in their respective fields, whereas manufacturing is vitally important to the prosperity of Union County, and whereas National Manufacturing Day has been established to expand the knowledge of and improve the public's perception of modern manufacturing. Now therefore, let it be resolved that the Union County Board of Commissioners hereby proclaim the week of September 29th through October 3rd as Make It in Union County Manufacturing Week. Thank you. All right. We'll now move to a proclamation for Childhood Cancer Awareness Month. With that, I'll read, this is the same thing, so I'll read it. Thank you. All right. Whereas every year, an estimated 263,000 new cases of cancer affect children under the age of 20 worldwide, 720 children a day, and every day, 250 children die from cancer around the world, and whereas every day in the United States, 46 children, more than a classroom, are diagnosed with a form of childhood cancer, and every day, seven children who have been fighting cancer lose their battles, not including the ones lost from treatment-related side effects. And whereas although 80% of childhood cancers are being cured, it still remains the leading cause of death by disease in children under 15 in the United States. And while progress has been made in curing some types of childhood cancer, for some children, there is still little or no hope. And whereas childhood cancer is not just one disease, it is made up of a dozen types and countless subtypes, and is diagnosed in all ages, from newborn infants to children, teens, and young adults. And whereas over 3,500 children are treated locally at Novant-Hembe Children's Hospital in Charlotte, North Carolina each year, and 45 of those children are battling cancer. And whereas treatment options for childhood cancer are hard, traumatic procedures for children to undergo, and the average child with cancer can spend well over 180 days in the hospital and can miss up to an entire year or even two years of school during their battle. In addition, 2/3 of childhood cancer patients may suffer long-lasting chronic conditions from treatment, and some of them are often life-threatening. Whereas there has not been a new drug for the treatment of childhood cancer in over 30 years excluding clinical trials, and many children are treated with adult-strength chemotherapy, drugs, and radiation. And whereas less than 4% of the federal government funding for cancer research is dedicated to childhood cancer each year, and until there is more funding for pediatric cancer research, the disease will continue to threaten and claim the lives of our children. Now therefore, the Union County Board of Commissioners hereby proclaim September 2014 as Childhood Cancer Awareness Month in Union County. I'll entertain a motion to accept that proclamation. All in favor? Aye. Thank you very much. That will take us to a public hearing on the proposed schedules of value standards and rules to be used in the 2015 Union County reappraisal. Madam Manager, alternative to you?
Yes, if I could ask John Potowski, our Tax Administrator, to come forward and make a presentation before you take any public comment.
Thank you.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Can I have the touch? Like I said, good evening. This is the, well, probably about the, one of the beginning steps of a reevaluation process is adoption of the schedule of values. And there are three things that can trigger a revaluation. One is the eight-year mandatory cycle. All right. Why that won't be so important? That one I can't fix. You can't fix that one? Well, the statute, 105-286, is, says that you have a eight-year cycle. That's the first trigger. The second weight to trigger a revaluation, the Board of Commissioners can, there you go. You got it. That's it. Whatever you did. Can vote to schedule a more frequent revaluation by doing what they call accelerating the revaluation. And the third is that once the county's sales and assessment ratio is greater, thank you, is greater than 115% and the population is over 75,000, then that can trigger a revaluation to be done in the next three years, and that's indeed what happened with us. We triggered the, we were over 115 in 2012, so we have to do a revaluation as a 1-1 2015. Why do we do a reappraisal? And I'll use the terms sometimes equally, it's either reappraisal or revaluation, the statutes actually refer to it as reappraisal. Number one reason is it fulfills the statutory requirement, which is what we have going to this situation. But larger than that, ensures all the properties that will get to current market value. Properties change at different rates, and you can't just put a flat percentage, you have to do a complete revaluation on every property to maintain equity in fairness. What the assessor's office doesn't do is we don't set the tax rate, we don't determine funding or create the budget. That's the commissioner's side of the equation. The assessor sets the base, the commissioner sets the rate. Market value, this is the statute that defines what market value is. It's adopted by the Appraisal Institute. It's a little bit long, but it's kind of important because several things that we're going to be talking about are built on the definition of market value. Basically, if you wanted to summarize this in a layman's terminology, the best way to say it, it's an arms-length transaction. We only deal with arms-length transactions between knowledgeable buyers and sellers that are familiar with, requisite to a fair sale, all the conditions, and assuming the price is not affected by undue stimulus. Sales ratio is on a single property, and I'll build on this and describe what a sales ratio study is next, but the ratio is the, is a ratio between the assessed value and the sale price. It's calculated by dividing the assessed value of the property by its sales price. For example, that we have here, if the assessed value of the property is 95,000, sold for 100,000, then by simple division, the sales ratio is 95%. So then what is a sales ratio study? A sales ratio study consists of some total of all the individual sales during a specified period of time. So, it's the sum total of all the individual sales ratios. This is sort of interesting, and I hope I can get this cursor to move. There, I can, a little bit. This is the only chart, and this is the only statistics that I've got. This column over here is the column for the ratio, and the other axis here are the years. These, this is 100%, the ideal, you want to be somewhere close to this line. You notice that, and this is the year of revaluation historically in red, so wherever you see somewhere close to that line, and it happens to be a revaluation year, then we brought the properties close to the market. You notice the trend in these previous years, the ratio is declining. That means that the property is selling more, for more than we have it assessed in succeeding years after a revaluation. You notice something happened right here. Starts going the other way around. That's called a recession. The whole thing went absolutely the other way around. We triggered the revaluation right here. That's actually 2013. And then the sale, the ratio, the sales have improved, so the ratio is coming back down, getting closer to the 100%. I just thought this was a particularly good way to depict it, and I can come back to that if you'd like. All right. Robin is my technical expert here, obviously. Aha, thank you. Don't go too far. This is sort of an overview of the next couple of slides. This is actually the appraisal process. One thing I wanted to mention is that we have a quality assurance program. We've been looking at property ever since the last revaluation, updating our, what we call, property characteristics. Then the next step, we'll review and qualify sales. The word "qualify" is kind of important because it gets back to that market value definition in the sense that we only use arms-length transactions. The next thing we do is determine the neighborhoods. These are neighborhoods that may not be just subdivisions, they're economic neighborhoods of homogeneity. Then we adopt the scheduled values. That's where we are right now, getting close to it. This is a hearing tonight. Then we'll present the information to the public, and then we'll send out a change of assessment notice. The quality assurance, it's been, like I said, it's been going on since 2008 on the entire parcel count. I think we have a tendency to think of just residential parcels, but we only have eight, well, only, we have 81,000 parcels of residential property, 4,000 commercial-industrial, 4,000 ag, a lot of that's under a used value, 5,000 exempt, schools and churches and so on, and so it's a total of 94,000 parcels. That's of real property. There's also personal property, which is not in the equation for a revaluation. So, this first step is to look at the sales. We track them, we actually send appraisers out, look at them, make sure they're good sales, and we do this by geographic areas. Second step, we create the neighborhoods. We have like as many as 800 appraisal neighborhoods, and I've got a map that kind of depicts it. It's a little bit busy. You'll notice it gets pretty dark during, in the, as you approach metropolitan areas, we'll have more neighborhoods, but there's 800 neighborhoods there. Well, we have sales in every eight, all the 800 neighborhoods, enough sales? Probably not. We'll have to kind of go to comparable properties or comparable neighborhoods. Schedule of values is developed using standard appraisal methods, but the typical methods are cost approach, market, a sales approach, and then an income approach is typically used on income-producing property. Then it'll set the base rates for different types of properties. So, basically, the schedule of values is a set of tables derived from the market. We load them and use our computer-assisted mass appraisal system for valuing property. By statute, all counties must establish a schedule of values for each reappraisal. This is a little bit unique to North Carolina. Other states will probably recommend, more commonly recognize an existing appraisal manual. The purpose of the schedule is to ensure that all properties are assigned, are praised using the same measurement as similar properties in comparable locations. We plan on mailing the notices in February, and the homeowners will have the opportunity to review their assessment with our office first. We resolve close to 80% of the issues right with, in what we call, informal review, and we'll have a form that explains the entire process and deadlines and so on. So, here's our schedule. We've already presented the schedule of values in September 2nd. Here we are, September 15th, doing the hearing, and then we'll finally adopt on October 6th, and that's all statutory distances between those dates. As far as the public awareness program, we've already started it. We've got some information on our website. We've been talking to the media. We'll continue to use the media outlets that we have contacts with. Civic and professional organizations, I think we have four presentations, very similar to what I'm giving right here, with civic groups and professional organizations. We have some appraisal brochures. I brought some with me tonight. If you read the article on the front page of the paper, I thought the reporter did a particularly good job and picked it up from the reappraisal brochure primarily. And then, of course, the appraisal notice itself contains a lot of information. So, what is the outlook? Our values, as I mentioned before, are not going to change uniformly across neighborhoods, different neighborhoods, different classes, different types of property, change at different rates. So, that's why you do a revaluation, otherwise we just put flat percentages. It's just not that, quite that easy, I'm afraid. The rate, if the board decides to remain revenue-neutral, is probably going to have to increase because the base is going to go down. There's no doubt about that. At this point, we don't exactly know how much. So, I wanted to show you a couple of the tools that we had. We use a CAMA system, as I mentioned. I've got some examples coming up here, GIS maps with aerials. We also track the market information from recorded sales or registered deeds and any other source we can get. CoStar is a new source of information for us. It's not new to the industry, just new to us. We contracted with them to get commercial real estate information, income and expense information for typical classes of property, and capitalization rates have been very useful for us. And then we have street imagery digital on all properties. Here's an sketch example that's attached to our CAMA piece. I can guarantee the appraiser that sketched that, it took more than an hour. That has to close. That's quite a sketch right there. This is an example of an aerial. This is an oblique image, actually. We use an awful lot of the planometric views, which are straight, straight down, and overlay them with property tax maps. Those boundaries right there are the property tax boundaries, lines. It's usually the base layer and used in all GIS maps because it's very useful information. We can tie a lot of information with, to that. This is a GIS map with different layers turned on, particular ones I see here. We've got a flood zone, and we've taken these into account, the amount of acreage that's involved in each one of these properties, flood zone, and we also have sewer, sewer lines, and the utility right away. These are typical things that we take into account. I think also on this particular sketch, we have, or map, we have the different classes of property, which is grades of property, all very helpful information at our appraisers' footsteps. This is a street-level image. We have pictures of houses. The old adage that a picture is worth a thousand words is true. It's particularly useful for us in the appeal, so that our board can see what these properties look like. And I think that is the end of my presentation. Any questions that we have to answer?
Any questions for Mr. Potowski? All right. Thank you, John. And I will now, seeing that we have no one signed up for public hearing comments, I'll move that we close the public hearing. And that will take us to our informal comments. First, we have Mr. Pinky Marsh.
My name is Pinky Marsh from Marshall, North Carolina. I think all of y'all know who I am. Listen, tonight, I've just come to ask a lot of questions. Get this election picture to come up. Last time I spoke to Sheriff Kathy, it was here two years ago, and I told him, I said, he was sitting on the back row, and Sheriff looked at me, and I said, "Sheriff, if you go upstairs and get that petition from me, I won't have to make this speech tonight." And he made the statement that we got the right man. I don't know what he was talking about. And I told him then, I said, "Eddie, I would have died for you. Now I'm willing to die to get you out." This election picture to come up. John Kerry said a little thing called the internet is making it harder to govern. Only reason the internet is making it harder to govern is because the media would not cover anything, tell the truth, because corruption in the politics, corruption in the government, corruption in the courthouse, this is all going to show up. So, I've got a lot of questions to ask you. Where's petition at Jerry Morris turning in to Brian Rogers, who was chairman of Board of Adjustment in 2007? I know where it's at. Why was I never written a citation if I broke the law? I know why that wasn't too, because I didn't break the law. I know why that one too, because I didn't break the law. Why did Board of Adjustments attempt to revoke a permit that had expired in 2007? Why did Superior Court Judge David Lee rule that I was a stopple when I only had four rodeos and that permit was for four rodeos? Why was a rodeo on William Griffin Road only written up when the sheriff's department is called out there? It's only written up in their own words, loud music. It was on a non-landified farm in 2010. The same rodeo I had, it's Bennett Rodeo. Who requested the roadblocks on Lanfor Road when I would have a vent? Know the answer to that one, too. Why did John Snyder go to the old house and tell Marion Cox after winning the primary? He says, "You get somebody else against this man, I'm out of here." That's getting real serious now, ain't it? After winning what he claimed was the best job ever, took the, said he took a partnership with a national offer. Today, John Snyder is the general counsel for Collection Agency. Why did John Snyder assign Annette, I mean Anita Jeanette Mason? The Jay Brown's case, you find a way to shut him down rather than shutting the Mexican rodeo down on William Griffin Road? Why was the Toys for Tots in 2009 stopped on my place? And they told Jesse Diaz, Sheriff Kathy told Jesse Diaz, "Well, you know, we didn't bother you on your place. It was only Pinky's place." You know, we've got a lot of questions to ask, and y'all need to be asking some of these questions really serious, because I'm telling you, I got the answers. You might want to ask Mr. Marion Cox. Did he or who put, maybe put spy equipment in his old house when y'all show up? Is he after somebody like me, or is he after somebody like y'all? Somebody has turned, really turned state's evidence. My case ain't nothing. I'm a grain of salt now. I do not know what my friends, and all of you know who my friends are. I don't know who my friends found, but I was able to prove that this county obstructed a federal courtroom. Okay? Well, I ain't going to take a whole lot of your time, because this is getting real interesting. Y'all been keeping up with a thing called Carolina Corruption. Well, I understand it's going to kick off Wednesday night, radio show. Since we can't get on radio weekly, we can't get the news media. Like John Edman said, when he sold it, I asked John, I said, "At least print the story you know." And John looked at me and said, "I'll think about it." Now, I'm going to tell you something. Y'all getting ready to think, because y'all got somebody that's really talking. I got a lot of witnesses from the county that saw that petition. Y'all gonna be surprised, I mean, it'll show up on video. If they saw the petition, then the county had it. You better be coming up with it. I appreciate your time, I say, y'all.
Thank you, Al. All right. That'll take us to James Carr.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the Board of Commission and county staff. I'm here before you tonight on behalf of my client, Kitty Terrell. She is the owner of the property that's in your consent agenda item M this evening regarding the Christmas Bureau. She could not be here herself. Her health is not what it used to be, but she had very much wanted to come this evening to tell you how pleased she is for this deal to come together and that she hopes that it is of service to the county, to the Department of Social Services, and particularly to the Christmas Bureau. And if there are any questions regarding the lease such as it is, I'll be happy to answer it now or at a later time, and I do thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Carr. James? Are there any questions? No. Good. Thank you. All right. That'll take us to our additions, deletions, and/or adoption of the agenda.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make the motion when we adopt the agenda as presented.
All right. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? None? Take us to our consent agenda?
Motion to approve consent.
All in favor? Aye. Opposed? None? That'll take us to item six under New Business Capital Improvement Program Update.
Mr. Gosicki, and I believe, will Craig also be presenting this evening?
Lieutenant Hansel, answer all the tough questions.
Okay.
So I have Scott Honeycutt is the Director of the Engineering Division of Public Works, and Craig Fox is the Director of Facilities Management Division of Public Works.
And what Ed and Public Works and facility staff will be doing this evening is just providing you an update on capital improvement program, not just Public Works, but those that are also some of our major facility projects.
Just a little, our agenda for tonight is to give you a little history and background, particularly with regard to the water and wastewater program and how we got to that program. Go through a description of the major projects in our water and sewer wastewater program, talk about the major projects in facilities, and then open to any questions that the board might have. On the water and wastewater side, our CIP, our Capital Improvement Program was developed essentially from the 2010 Comprehensive Water and Wastewater Master Plan prepared by the engineering firm of Blackwood Beach and adopted by the Board of County Commissioners. In working through that master plan, various performance criteria and levels of service were established for the system to describe the capacity needs and the reliability that was needed in the system. And infrastructure improvements were then recommended based upon modeling of the collection system, distribution system in our plants, looking out at 2015, 2020, and 2030 needs. So it looked at both the existing infrastructure and how well was it operating now, layered on top of that the projected growth over the next twenty years, and came up with a series of recommendations. The kind of criteria that went into the evaluation on the water system, we looked at fire flow within our existing system, other areas that are not meeting a minimum service level of a thousand gallons per minute at twenty PSI. We looked at average service pressures of forty PSI. The Weddington area water tank was one of those areas that was affirmed that had a pressure problem that needed to be looked at. We looked at velocity in the pipe. We looked at capacities of pump stations. So we looked at specific criteria and applied that across the board. It's one of our goals in the master plan is to be able to provide the same consistent level of service across our service area. We did the same thing on wastewater collection system, looked at the capacity of the pipes. Where do we have constraints? Where are we starting to meet or exceed the capacity of those pipes and need to increase those capacities? We looked at safety with force means and pump stations. The master plan identified a total of one hundred and twenty projects for the twenty-year planning period. And it's the nature of the way the projects were identified, they were all very small, discreet projects. The county then went forward and developed a six-year capital improvement program based upon that twenty-year need, looking at what we need to do in the first six years, with the first year being funded in your project. In developing the capital project, capital budget for this year and last year, we consolidated down these projects to programs, rather than having a hundred and twenty or as this in the six-year program, fifty-seven discreet projects. We grouped like projects that were dependent upon one another. So if we needed to build a pump station with a water tank in order to meet a service need, we combined those as a single program, identifying discreet projects within that program. As a result, we wound up with twenty capital programs that are in the CIP, and those projects are representative of, programs are representative of fifty-seven discreet projects and some four hundred million dollars of projected expense. Won't run you through this. This is the budget document that you've approved, just to show you that we are actually working off the budget document and didn't create our own. We're going to talk about the ones that are highlighted here, and that's the only reason we're going through this, is to talk to you, show you that we're going to not talk about every single project, just the major ones that are either in planning, either in design or construction at this time. We have a couple of major projects on here, significant dollars that are just getting into the design phase later this year, and we'll update the board on those in future meetings. So our major water and wastewater capital projects, we have the Twelve Mile Creek Wastewater Treatment Plant improvements. This is the county's largest treatment plant. It serves about seventy-five percent of our needs in Union County. We have a forty-seven million dollar project there. East Fork Twelve Mile, this is one of the major interceptor lines, one of the major sewer lines that brings wastewater flow to the Twelve Mile Creek Wastewater Plant. There's a major project there to upgrade that. Race Fork Interceptor is a new wastewater collection project, and we'll describe that. So this is a brand-new pipe in the ground. Eighty-eighty Pressure Zone is a water supply project. This is improving the pressure in our system and creating a new pressure zone in that area. Crooked Creek Basin Project is a project dealing with Crooked Creek Wastewater Treatment Plant and its tributaries. Mineral Springs Collection System is an example of the downtown sewer projects that the board authorized. We'll talk about that one. Taba River Water Treatment Plant, we have a major program there of some twenty-five million dollars. We'll talk about that program. The Yakton River Water Supply Project, which we updated the board on several months ago. We'll give you a status update on that, and we'll talk about our short water line extension. So Twelve Mile Creek, the Fonzie, which is a finding of no significant impact, was a major environmental hurdle in terms of environmental permitting. That was received in October of 2013. We are now moving forward with the final permit to allow us to move forward with construction on that project. We expect to have that final NPVES permit, National Pollution Discharge Elimination System permit, by the end of this year. We're currently in the preliminary design of this project, and the first stage was to do a conceptual design report that looked at both interim improvements and how do we segment ourselves from the current work, schedule and interim improvements to get us from where we are today at six million gallons, take care of short-term needs, move us to nine million gallons of capacity in the near term and twelve million in the longer The phase expansion identified some initial improvements that were needed essentially immediately, and those are improvements to our final stage of treatment process, the ethylene filters, and we'll talk a little bit about that. We have an interim expansion that will take us to seven and a half million gallons per day and significantly improve system reliability. Then we have the expansion from seven to nine, and a future expansion, probably ten years down the road, from nine to twelve. What's funded in the current CIP are the first three elements. I want to point out to the board that the program as it developed is different from the way it's presented in the budget. We'll be coming back as we start defining this and revising the budget document. Our budget, when we prepared this last year, assumed we would spend about ten million dollars on interim improvements and then expand directly to nine MGD and spend about thirty-three million dollars doing that. As we got into the actual mechanisms of what we need to do short-term and how we're going to get there, the interim improvements became a much bigger project, and the interim improvements are, will now get us to seven and a half million gallons per day, kind of an interim expansion we hadn't anticipated, but will cost us thirty-three million dollars. And then the final expansion to nine will only cost us the ten million dollars. So we kind of reversed how we're spending the money. It's all within the budget capital improvement program as it exists, but the sequencing has changed. We're doing more upfront and less on the back end, and we'll talk through what that looks like. I'm not going to get into details of design on filtration system, but just to let you know, we're basically gutting the existing filters that are out there. They've been in service for over ten years. We've had significant operational problems over the last five. They've been rehabbed once. Engineering evaluation looked at multiple alternatives as to how to move forward, and decision is to move forward with a cloth media filter, which is a standalone pre-canned system that we can literally buy these and almost literally drop them in and plumb them up. Still a significant cost, total construction cost of about three million dollars, but it is a retrofit and will sit in existing facilities. Expansion to seven and a half million gallons a day. Again, our original thought was that we knew we had some challenges in our filters, we knew we had some challenges in our solids handling portion of the treatment plant, we knew we had some challenges with the headworks, with screening. We weren't sure what it would look like as we move forward in design. As we looked at the process, though, the decision was really to move forward with, in addition to those issues that we knew were out there, to do some significant upgrades to our existing core process, our, for those of you that have visited the treatment plant, the core oration system in the middle of the treatment is the core of the wastewater treatment plant. And we had a time constraint that requires us to essentially take existing units down and refurbish them and put in new systems while we still have the capacity to do it. And that's what pushed a lot of dollars upfront. If we wait too long, we don't have the capacity to take existing units out of service and work on them, we'll be using all of them. So it pushed some money upfront. What you can see highlighted in red, this is an aerial shot looking down at the treatment plant from above. Gray is existing. Everything in red is either new or rehabbing of existing, and you can see there's a lot of new work going on in here in terms of new solids treatment facilities, new disinfection facilities, new screening facilities, as well as refurbishing existing oration basins. To get us to nine, then, we just add the blue in, and you can see very little construction then to go from the seven and a half to nine, essentially put in one new circular clarifier and some equipment. So the big work to get to nine is going to be upfront, the smaller effort on the back end. And to get to twelve, we basically duplicate some of the equipment in the middle there. So it's a phased approach. We've also looked at what do we take to go up to fifteen as an ultimate build-out. Our permit is for twelve. We're not sure if we'll ever get to fifteen in the next twenty or thirty years, but we planned from a site layout just to make sure we could do it. Where we are in schedule right now, we began the design of the seven and a half. We intend to begin the design of the expansion by January of this year, complete the design by 2016. Again, thirty-three million dollar estimated construction cost, thirty months construction complete by 2018. Our projections are that we'll need this capacity online in the 2019, 2020 timeframe, so this gets us that capacity completely a year, two years prior to when we think we'll need it. That's one. Nineteen more to go. East Fork Twelve Mile Interceptor improvements. This project goes back to our 2005 master plan and was identified back then as needed improvements to existing sewer lines. It was confirmed again in the 2011 plan, and it's really designed to reduce infiltration inflow and provide additional capacity. The project, again, runs along the East Fork to Twelve Mile from south of Weddington Road near Newtown Road, where it ties in with the existing interceptors, runs up past Goldmine Road and through existing communities. And the challenge on this project is we're replacing existing sewer lines that are running through people's backyards. We have seven miles of pipe that we're running through these people's property, ranging from twelve to thirty inches in diameter, seven million dollars' worth of construction, and we're looking to start construction now. So this is moving forward. We've had a serious amount of public involvement, two formal meetings as well as innumerable one-on-one meetings with the property owners, some sixty-four easements that we need to get, either due to some realignment or construction easements, because we would have to go outside of our existing sewer easements. I could tell you there were serious challenges here where people in these neighborhoods had not respected our existing sewer easements and built things like gazebo's on top of our sewer easements, and had some fencing. And this is one of the few nice open areas in some of these neighborhoods. That's a sewer easement running through the middle of the trees. We particularly like this one. This is a manhole that neighborhood got pretty creative on landscaping. Our sewer easement runs literally right across all these backyards, right through all those fences. fences. And yes, it cuts the corner of that shed. So our staff, I'm really proud of the job our staffs and consultant did in working with the community and resolving these easement issues and looking at alternative technology. One of the things we'd be doing in some of the communities is instead of going through and excavating, it's a technique called pipe bursting, where we literally run a device down through the existing pipe, break the existing pipe, and run a new pipe right in alongside, break in through that same framework. So we don't have to excavate at all. We're using that technology in some of these neighborhoods so we can disrupt these neighborhoods as little as possible. I know we've been successful to date because I haven't heard from any of you about what are you doing in those people's backyards, but construction will start soon, and I expect you will get a few calls, but we've got a good team of people working, and again, we've been working very closely with the community there, both individually and through the HOAs. Race Fork Interceptor is a new project that was identified in the master plan, and the driver on this was to provide capacity for a future jail expansion, the animal control center, the Ag Center, that whole aspect of county property there to make sure we had sufficient sewer capacity to deal with current and future needs. Right now, we have a small pump station that pumps the wastewater from that actually into the city of Wingate's collection system and then back into our own regional system. So this will provide a gravity sewer line that will start from the area of the jail and go directly to our east regional system pump station. The city of Wingate is already talking to us about interest in getting rid of one of their pump stations and tying to this pipeline. So we think it'll have not only immediate benefits for county-owned facilities, but will help in the area-wide program as well. Public Works Operations Center is a project I'm particularly proud to bring forward, and our people at Public Works have been working in some really minimal, minimal conditions for, I'm not sure how long, probably ten-plus years, if not longer, that they've been out there. What this is, is a tough aerial shot, and the resolution isn't quite as good as I'd like, but it superimposes the new over the old. And I'll get into some better drawings later, but essentially what we have now is an existing driveway that comes up and dumps into a gravel area here, and we have an old building that we're using as combination warehouse. There's a nominal amount of locker room space in there. There's no women's locker room in there. There's a small meeting room, and that's about it. It used to be an old laboratory building and admin building for an old wastewater plant that was there some twenty, thirty years ago. We have some existing covered storage here for our heavy equipment, and this is steel structures, steel roofing. We have another prefab metal building out here that's about ten years old that is used, again, for equipment storage. This is our main meeting room, and again, this is a prefab metal building, ventilated, heated, but not air-conditioning, and that's where we meet. We have our luxurious office complex of two single wide trailers with a wood patio in between them, about a dozen wood sheds, some starting to tilt a little bit, and that's our facilities right now. So what we're moving forward to is keeping what's good and getting rid of what doesn't work and building some new. So the existing metal storage buildings that are housing all of our major equipment, we're keeping that, actually putting roll-down doors on front of them so we can protect them a little bit better, putting a finished floor on the bottom instead of derrick. The existing building here will stay. This existing building, which is, again, a prefab metal building, is used to house some of our specialty equipment. We're actually expanding that building to house the sheriff's specialty equipment. So he has three specialty vehicles that he uses, his command center and his other specialty SWAT mobiles. They will be housed out here now. So as part of this contract, we did a bid alternate, and the board approved that alternate last month, so we'll be housing his vehicles. We're getting rid of all of our wooden storage sheds, putting up a new warehouse in the middle of the facility, and putting up some shop areas in the back and a new administration building. Administration is a bit of a misnomer for this type of facility. It's the staging area for all of our operating personnel. So there's a small area, and I'll show you the floor plan, that is office space for our superintendents. It's our major control center, but it's mostly training rooms, locker rooms, lunchroom, staging areas where our crews come in in the morning, finish out at the end of the day to get their work done. The total site we're on is nineteen acres that we'll be utilizing. We own some eighty acres out there, so we have a lot of room on that property that is county-owned property for potential future use. It's about fifty-five thousand square feet, seven-point-six-million-dollar contract for construction on a nine-million-dollar budget. That budget also needs to cover the engineering and architectural costs and all the interior outfit that we'll be doing on our own. Contract was awarded. We expect to start construction next month and be complete in a little over a year. I know this is tough to see at this level. This is just a artist renderings of the profiles of these buildings. These are, again, metal-framed buildings, metal-sided buildings on steel frame, steel metal roof, same type of construction as the Ag Center. So that same metal siding, the same kind of metal roof that's in the Ag Center is what we're using here. We're using a base of concrete block, more somewhat for aesthetics, but more for durability long-term and aesthetics long-term. With the tape type of work there, we want that to have a hardened surface around the bottom. What's in here, again, the big area here is the staging area, field crew, supervisors, locker rooms, training room, HVAC, and some office and control room space over on this side. This is just a plan of the warehouse, the big warehouse, actually a medium-sized warehouse. And this is our shops. The shops are mostly open bay garages with one closed bay garage, and the sign shop, which is located on Patton Avenue, will be moving out to this facility as part of this project and is located in this building. These were some early artist renderings of what it might look like inside, and it's similar. The crew room, again, that big open area is gonna be essentially a big open area with some desks and small work areas where crews can get their paperwork done beginning into the day, and just kind of a view of what the building will look like. We did a little work on the entrance just to give it a brick facade, make it look a little standout from the rest of the building. Crooked Creek Basin Improvements. Our Crooked Creek Wastewater Treatment Plant had some of the most serious challenges in terms of performance, and not so much from the plant, but we had the leakiest sewer system there. And we've been working over the years to try to rectify some of those issues. As part of the master plan said, yeah, you're gonna need to do some serious work on the influent pump station and to deal with all this flow, and recommended, as part of the master plan, recommended that we do a study of the collection system to see how we can mitigate all of that excess rainwater getting into the sewer system. So that study was done last year and essentially created a roadmap for the improvements at Crooked Creek. The study recommended, again, kind of took to the next level what the master plan said and further defined it. We need to do corrections to infiltration inflow. We needed a new major pump station at the head end. We needed to build an equalization tank, which is a big storage tank, because even if we remediate some of the infiltration inflow, we still get more flow than we can handle, and the basin is basically hold it during the rain event so it doesn't overflow in the ground, and put it back in treatment plant and treat it after the rain subsides. And then some other improvements. Just a map of the Crooked Creek drainage area. The color coding is the areas we identified as needing corrections in the system immediately, short-term, and then longer-term. So all the areas in red are short-term improvements to the collection system. This is where we go in with TV cameras and grounding equipment and actually run a camera through the sewer lines, identify cracks, breaks, leaks, misalign pipe, and fix them as we go. So we've actually awarded the first contracts, the engineering contracts for that first phase and are starting to move forward with those improvements. At the plant itself, we'll be building a new flow equalization tank, a new pump station. Total project cost is about eight-point-five million dollars. It's a big pump station, handle a lot of flow for a small plant. That pump station will have future capacity to pump wastewater flow back to Twelve Mile Creek if needed. So we'll have that ability to move flows both directions there also. Mineral Springs Collection System, this was a project, as part of the master plan, the board recognized that we need the ability to work with our municipal partners and assure that there was wastewater capacity, physical capacity, a pipeline in their town center that would facilitate growth or redevelopment of our towns. And Mineral Springs was the first one to come forward and say, you know, we've got a whole downtown development plan, we've had it on the books for a couple of years, and really what's keeping us from being able to do any downtown development is sewer. We have the same kind of a project going right now with the town of Stallings, and Stallings is being done a little differently. We work to design the improvements. They're actually gonna do the improvements to the sewer system as part of a road program they're doing, but we'll fund those improvements. But it's the same concept, how do they redevelop their downtown and make sure the sewer capacity is there? So this provides sewer capacity down that Highway seventy-five corridor in Mineral Springs. It's about a little over a mile of gravity line plus a small pump station, some forest main. A little over a million dollars construction is now complete, so we have finalized construction. We're going through final testing and checkout and should be fully operational in October. And just to show you briefly what this looks like, the color coding is from the land use plan from the town of Mineral Springs. So we work with them to look at, okay, how are you gonna develop in the future? What's your future land use look like? What are your short-term objectives? And the system we designed and built essentially is designed to handle the areas in blue and purple, which are their short-term commercial development projects. And obviously, those folks that are adjacent to the line could hook up immediately. The future residential areas, as they develop, the developer building those would have to build the appropriate infrastructure as anyone else to be able to connect up to these lines. But the backbone is now in the ground available for them to move forward. Taba River Water Supply Project, one of our longer-running projects. There's three elements to this project as it's currently moving forward. There's a reliability improvements project that is currently underway. There's a new onsite raw water reservoir, which is the big project out there, and there's a future treatment plant expansion that we're looking at. The reliability project, we pulled that out as a separate project that was originally tied in with future expansion issues, but our expansion needs are, have really been put out several years because of our cooperative agreements with Lancaster Water and Sewer District. We're able to optimize the existing plant through lease agreements, so we've been really able to push off for several years any expansion. But there are some interim improvements that are needed. This contract was just awarded. It's essentially a new pump station to get finished water to Lancaster. It's some improvements to some of the filtration system and associated permitting that goes with that. Total construction cost, about seven million dollars. Estimated completion date, this November of fifteen. We have a short-term deadline for a few interim completions, but overall project a little over a year from now. The reservoir is the big project out there. This is the existing reservoir that, this is the existing reservoir that's onsite right now. The existing reservoir gives us about three days of storage capacity, and the intent of the new reservoir is to really give us enough capacity that if there's a significant drought and we have to be off the river, because our intake is on the river, our intake is not in Lake Wiley or Lake Norman or Fishing Creek reservoir, we're on the river. So if there's a drought and there's not enough flow in the river, we have to get off the river. So we recognize the need for much longer storage, in the order of thirty-plus days of storage for both drought or if there's some kind of a catastrophe, if there's a major oil spill, an oil tanker crashes off a bridge and falls into the river, and we need to get off the river for a period of time, we need that kind of backup. So that's the intent of this project, is to provide us that drought buffer and emergency supply. This is a significant reservoir. This is ninety-two acres in surface area. The dam that will create this reservoir is ninety feet, and I've learned that that will be the highest earthen dam in South Carolina. So it is a significant project in scope and size. We're flooding, you know, again, ninety-two acres of area. There was existing streams that ran up through this area that are being flooded, and as a result of that, we had to mitigate those streams. And also, as part of that process, we have to receive environmental permits to do this from both the state of South Carolina and from the Army Corps of Engineers. We finally had the state permit issued to us in May of this year, so that state permit is in hand, and we keep telling ourselves that our best guess is that the Army Corps will actually issue a permit to us in September, October of this year, and we're sitting here waiting every day for that permit to come to us. But we think we're there. We have answered all the questions and all the questions and all the questions. There are no more questions coming to us, so we think they are ready to issue it. You can see on the cost of the reservoir, thirty-six million dollars. In addition to that, additional five million dollars on mitigation to mitigate the impacts of those streams through mitigation bank credits and self-performing mitigation, and of which our bill is half of that and our partner Lancaster Water and Sewer picking up the other half. New eight-eighty zone, pressure zone, new eight-eighty pressure zone improvements. This is two projects that make this up, the Weddington Area Water Storage Tank and now a new booster pump station that will pump water up to that storage tank, and both are needed to improve the pressure there. The Weddington Water Tank, I know this board is very familiar with, but just to, for the record, people listening at home, again, this will provide that new higher level of storage, increase the pressure in that area from the current eight-fifty to eight-eighty, and improve the pressure generally in that area by having the tank in that area. Located along Hemby Road, again, designed to deal with pressure issues, one-point-five million gallons, one-hundred-seventy-eight feet high. We secured, three contractors bid on this back in July. Low bidder was three-point-four million dollars, good bid below our engineering estimate. We anticipate a notice to proceed in October and anticipate final completion in May of two thousand sixteen. Significant construction time in building these because of the specialty of the construction, not that it's difficult, it's just limited numbers of crews around the country that can do this work, and they're all pretty busy right now apparently. To go with that, we have this new eight-eighty pressure zone pump station, and the pump station design was completed back in August. We have now submitted that into the state for appropriate permitting. We hope to advertise for construction in October, award in November, some fourteen months in construction, and expect the pump station to be finished two months or so prior to the tank being finished, so the two will come together as a complete. An artist's rendering of this, this pump station, the board will, is located right along Providence Road and is adjacent to one of the few commercially-zoned parcels on Providence Road in this area. So recognizing that there was high visibility to this project and its adjacency to future commercial, we had our engineers work to make this look like a commercial development, and we actually went out and took pictures of some of the major commercial development in the area and tried to match it up architecturally with, you know, a bank or a strip store complex, and that's why you see this architectural look to it. We've actually changed this slightly and bumped out a wall to break that linear look up a little bit, but this is what it will look like from Providence Road. It is heavily wooded behind it, and there is residential behind it, but we'll be keeping all that tree buffer, and, yeah, we'll be doing a better job on the landscaping in front and not these pacebound trees that the engineers put in. Yatkin River Water Supply Project is the largest single project program we have in the water and sewer side of the business. The board, I know, is familiar with this. We updated the board several months ago on our current status. Project really started, was identified, the need for it in the master plan. We completed a contract with the town of Norwood back in two thousand, May of two thousand and thirteen, and the concept being partnering with the town of Norwood to build a new raw water intake on Lake to build a new raw water intake on Lake Tillery that would serve both the town of Norwood's existing water treatment plant and be able to pump water into Union County, where we would build a brand-new treatment plant for Union County to serve the Yatkin Basin. To do that, it's an inter-basin transfer from the Yatkin River Basin to the Rocky River sub-basin of the Yatkin River. But under current state law, inter-basin transfers and inter-basin transfer, we have to go through the same process. The process is designed to be tedious and cumbersome. We are in our second year. We've already probably spent about a million and a half dollars on this, and the board just authorized another million and a half for the next two years. The big challenges are giving a complete environmental impact statement on this program, looking at some 12 different alternatives. Because this is tied to an inter-basin transfer and is also tied to a water use permit, we get to look out 50 years in terms of our planning from now, because it'll take us five to seven years to finish this. We get to do 40 years on top of that for a FERC license, so we're really looking long-term. Part of the environmental impact statement, again, we're looking at some 12 different alternatives that we need to go through and not only do an engineering evaluation, but do a complete environmental evaluation of each of those alternatives. So our preferred option, option one, is building a new intake off of Lake Tillery as described. We're also looking at, can we come in off Tucker Town Reservoir through an agreement possibly with Albemarle? Can we come in off Bluewood Falls, working through an agreement with Anson County? Can we come off the main stem of the river? Can we get sufficient water off Rocky River instead of going to the Yatkin at all? Can we expand the Catawba Plant further? Can we do this through interconnections with Charlotte Mecklenburg? Is there enough groundwater? Can we just conserve our way out of any need for expansion? Can we use our wastewater in direct potable reuse and mitigate it? And can we just do nothing and hope things get better? And can we return more flow to the Yatkin to reduce the amount of IBT? The last three, other than the do-nothing, are kind of subsets that will be looked at as part of all of them, but you can see just the magnitude of the alternatives we're required to look at. And for each of these, not only look at the engineering, the economics, but look at the environmental impact. So it's a significant timeframe. So where we are right now, we're working with our external stakeholders on a continuing basis. We're into the alternative analysis and conceptual design, the environmental analysis that goes with those. We developed a complete river model of the entire Yatkin River from North Carolina border into South Carolina, North Carolina border with Virginia into South Carolina as part of this, to show the impacts to the river of all these alternatives. And we're also looking at a water treatment plant siting analysis, trying to identify potential site for a treatment plant. Our schedule, the draft EIS should be completed this coming February and submitted to the EMC, the Environmental Management Commission. That's when we fall into the black hole of permitting review and negotiations, and we've blocked out two years of going through the process based upon the history. And this is where our continued dialogue with our elected officials, with the EMC board members, and with Deaner, in looking at how can we expedite this process. Right now, we're anticipating a... ...get through that. Designed in 2017, 2019, timeframe, construction in the latter part of the decade, and start up by 2022, which coincidentally is when we project we've got to have this water plant online to meet our needs. So this is a relatively aggressive schedule for this kind of project, and it's still a very long schedule, and it's tight in meeting our needs. The last water and sewer project we wanted to talk about is a short waterline extension program. This program was adopted and developed as part of the water and sewer extension ordinance that the board approved some two years ago now. As part of that ordinance, we set up a framework for residents to be able to come in to get partial funding of a waterline extension to their property if they were in need of such service. The board has funded a half million dollars a year annually for this, and we accept applications the first business day after July 1 each year. To date, we've received 84 applications. We're into our third year of accepting applications. Those applications would serve 215 residents, because applications can come in for up to five different parcels could be in one application. There's some 28 miles of waterline identified in this program. To date, we've completed the first two years, some six miles, serving 64 residents. We're currently designing year three. That will serve an additional 21 residents. Based upon the half million dollars a year, though, we've got a backlog of about eight years to get through this backlog. So it's still a significant amount of work to be done at the rate we're going. The projects have been across the county. So in year one, these were the projects we hit. In year two, they were here, and we don't have year three plotted up here yet. So it's been a very successful program. It's been well-accepted by the community. We'd certainly like to do more as we can. We have projects coming up next year that we're starting to find clusters of communities that are looking for, clusters of residents within a community that are looking for waterline extensions. And we're starting to look at those and go, is there a better way to do it other than through this program? And maybe look at setting up improvement programs for that neighborhood, because they become much more extensive. And the way our system works right now, first come, first served, we expect some people to drop out next year, because they won't be able to afford to be first. They'll just have to pay too much on their own. So I expect to come back to the board with some discussions as we get into the next year on this, with how we might handle some other particular situations. Facilities. Got a lot less than facilities. And facilities, again, is managed by Craig Fox. All the water and wastewater, Scott and his team handle. Again, same kind of map. We're not going to talk through all of them, just hit some of the highlights. Human Services Building is the biggest single project we have in the general fund, CIP. As the board knows, this is new construction to handle, to house the Union County Human Services Department, primarily Social Services Health Department and some of the other, transportation and other programs associated with it. It's currently programmed at about 175,000 square feet. Program is designed to allow for future expansion beyond that. We're looking at parking for some 400 staff, 200 customers. We have a $42 million budget. Of that, approximately $28 million is for construction. The balance is for land acquisition, for engineering, architecture, and for other furnishings of the building within that budget. We're currently in the design phase, and we're pending, as the board knows, in property acquisition. So we're right in that phase of doing some conceptual design, but until we lock down the site and have that finished, then we can move forward with more of the conceptual design. Our current schedule has us creating what the board will recall, we're doing this as a bridging design-build or a modified design-build project rather than a more traditional design-bid-build. In this case, we actually, through our architect, develop about 30% complete design documents and then bid that out to design-build firms who will detail out the design and build to that specification. So we're looking to complete the documents on our side by June of this, of 2015. We estimate that the final design by that bridging design contractor would be done... Yeah, the bridging design proposals, then, based upon that document, we would put out proposals. We would receive proposals in June of 2015, award that by July of 2015. By January of 2016, six months later, we would have final design completed by that design builder for our approval, and then authorize them to move forward with construction. Construction going then from 2016 into about 18 months, June of 2017, coincident with termination of our lease at the existing facility. So right now, we're on track on this. We've got some significant effort in front of us, but product is moving well. This is just an artist's rendering from a previous site. We're looking at the same basic concept for the site we're looking at now. Jesse Hales Park Passive Use Area. This project consists of construction of a small passive-use park as part of the county's park and recreation master plan. It's located adjacent to the Ag Center. We opened bids in August of this year. Construction is expected to start within next month. The project consists of pavement of the road coming off the Ag Center to a small roundabout parking area, the appropriate and necessary stormwater mitigation that goes with that, and a construction of a hiking trail in that area. Ultimately, this project will connect up to the soccer complex on the other end, but at this time, this will just be part of the passive-use area. This is the Ag Center parking area back here. So this will connect the road through, end in a roundabout, small parking area. This area needs to be greeded out as part of the stormwater. The dash line is the hiking trail. This area is essentially a big open field right now, and that's the intent, is to get a small parking area here where people can use that field for different events, again, in a very passive-use kind of area. And again, that is scheduled to start construction this fall, winter, and it's a...
Two months, three months?
About 120 days.
Last major project we want to talk about is the USO firing range. I've got to learn more about firing ranges in the last six months than I thought I'd ever know. What we're building is a fully baffled 100-meter, 12-lane range. So it's 12 lanes wide, 100 meters long, and the design is based upon the certification needs of our law enforcement officers here in the county, both the sheriff and other folks that may use this. And the 100 meters was really a hard requirement they had in order to meet their rightful certifications. We went through a series of conceptual designs to come up with something that stayed within the budget and still met the sheriff's needs. So we downscaled it from a much bigger facility to the 12 lanes, 100 meter. We kept some back of the house, other than the range. So there's a small office area there, some restrooms, a weapons cleaning area, and some storage area. There is no training facility. That was part of original feasibility and conceptual design, so we had to shrink a lot of that down to stay within budget. So it's still a $7.2 million total budget, $6 million in construction. Some of that, we've already expended on land acquisition. Again, we're currently in the design phase of that project. We expect the design to be complete in March of this upcoming year. Bid it in March through May, and then start construction in June and be finished approximately April the following year, some nine months of construction. Facility is off of Mills Harris Road, and it's at the back end of the property, which is one of the things that made it a little expensive, was just getting this road worked in. It's just part of an overall master plan the sheriff has for the rest of the site. And getting it to the back end was both a safety and a noise mitigation issue to get it back near other undeveloped property. As you can see or can't see, this is the office, cleaning area, weapon storage, and the bulk of the facility is the firing range. This is not an indoor range. It's not quite an outdoor range either. It's, again, what's termed a fully baffled. So it has concrete block walls on the side, but the roof, if you're standing at the target area looking back, as this photo is looking down the target area, if you look back, you can see you're looking out at daylight. And that's what this baffling is. It's a series of baffles set at an angle that if there's, is what it looks like from the shooting position, you just see these baffle walls coming down. And the intent is that if there's an errant round that takes off, it'll hit the baffle and be directed downrange into the collection area. So it isn't an air-conditioned space. It is a ventilated space, and the ventilation is more of a health and safety issue because of all the firing that goes on in there. But it is open air, but fully baffled, and that's really a requirement of the site that it's on. To do anything less than that would require a lot more area around it to meet current We're here to answer the questions you have about these projects. It's a big program. Again, water and sewer loans, about $400 million. These three projects on facilities, $40, $50, $50 million. So we've got a lot of work on the table and actively moving on a lot of it.
Mr. Simpson?
Ed, I'm sure you've heard the saying, it's nice to put a name with a face. Appreciate the amount of work that went into this and the time you spent, you and your staff. You know, when you see a budget document and you see all those numbers over time running together, you don't realize the scope and the complexity of providing services to a growing community. And I think many of the pictures and many of the explanations did just that. So I appreciate you taking the time to do it. Do have one question, and you may not be able to answer it, with regard to the passive area at Jesse Hales. Is that going to be monitored by Parks and Rec personnel, or is that gate going to be locked during after-hours, or is, I mean, access across that bridge going to be limited?
My understanding it was going to be monitored, but let me double-check on that, and I will get back with you. Because I think it was intended that it would be an open space that the public could generally use, but I understand also the potential nuisance issue.
That's my understanding. Well, if they'll have normal operating hours, I'm assuming they'll go out there and close the gate. It will be gated.
Mr. Thomas?
Along that line, I'll just jump to that issue first. Is that going to include what I call the bridge to nowhere?
That is paving over the bridge to passive-use area.
Passive-use area, that's good.
Go to the passive.
The bridge to the passive-use area. I'll have to put that in my repertoire. I agree with Commissioner Simpson. It's kind of, I was sitting here thinking, you know, having been on the groundwork of discussing all these in a conceptual nature, to see it kind of take fruition, see some of these architectural designs is very powerful, and then be able to realize that we're doing that, the efficiency of being able to save the tax money over time and build that in and forecast and plan appropriately. It is refreshing to see versus a knee-jerk reaction. Along that line, I know back we were talking, when you wrapped up with the sheriff's master plan there off of Mills Harris Road. There was, when we first started talking with him, I believe he was going to look at doing some training for driving and so forth. That's still on the table, but just not funded. Is that still correct?
That's correct. It's part of the plan, but no funding.
Okay. All right. Good. Good job.
All right. I believe that takes care of that. We thank you, sir.
Thank you much.
All right. And that will take us to the county manager's comments. Madam manager?
I have no comments this evening, Chairman.
All right. Thank you much. Mr. Hales?
No comments, you see.
Commissioner Thomas?
Good evening.
Vice Chairman?
Just one. I want to remind everyone, since we won't have another meeting before that, on September 23 at the South Piedmont Community College at 6:30 PM in Salon B will be your final opportunity to take a look at the comprehensive transportation plan and the land use master plan, 2025 comprehensive master plan for Union County. So I encourage you, if you have the opportunity to do that, drop in, visit with staff and personnel, and take a look at what Union County looks like down the road. And if you have comments, we certainly want to hear them.
All right. And I have no comments. So with that, I'll move that we adjourn. All in favor? Aye. Oppose? None.